Six o'clock, call a meeting to order. Bob Maynard, would you offer prayer, please?
Thank the Lord for the fine people of Jasper, Texas, and the people working to improve Jasper. We are blessed with some of the finest and kindest people in one of those beautiful countries, beautiful places in America. Lord, please guide our council and we'll be, Lord, continuing the development of a better Jasper, Texas. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Turn the council members' attention to the information for council members from SRMPA notes. It's already in your binder. Departmental reports. Greg?
Yes, sir.
Streets project. God says Wade is not here, if you let us know how that's going, please.
Main Street is almost complete. All it has is some drifts up left on it, plus bits right. And then they're putting a mixing line out of Derrick Street and Rhine Street, and out of Main Hill subdivision. Hopefully they'll have that line about along.
Okay. This deal, it's going pretty good. Chief, any updates on the park? Are we still having the ringers out there, or they done?
They still there, but we haven't had any soundings, so...
But how many have we caught so far?
Fifty-one.
Any other departments who need to report these, anything else? Okay, public comments. I have one public comment, Ms. Teresa Baloo. Come up, please.
Thank y'all for giving me a chance to speak this evening. I'm not real sure whether this will do any good, but the thing is that I'm gonna address it. And I'm Teresa Baloo, and I have owned and operated Jolteet at twenty-one forty-five North Wheeler Street for almost nineteen years. I'm here this evening to address something that happened at my business at twenty-one forty-five North Wheeler Street a couple of Saturdays ago. There was a huge reunion block party on the land behind my shop. I don't know who put it on. I don't know if a permit was issued or even required. I have no clue. But I understand there was four to five hundred people there. I did go to the police department and talked about it the next morning. Eventually, the police were called because North Main Street was completely blocked. I also know there was at least one arrest. Vehicles were parked all over the front and back of my shop. But I will say there was no damage other than a lot of trash. Here are my issues. I have no knowledge of the event, so I was unable to block off my parking lot. I had dealers, and my dealers come to my shop in the evenings after work. They had keys to work in their booths and stuff like that. They couldn't find a place to park, plus they were a bit scared and overwhelmed by the crowd. One of my other dealers tried to go down Main Street, couldn't get through there because it was completely blocked. There was also a lot of trash everywhere. But the greater issue was the amount of underage drinking that was going on there, and there was a ton of it. I know this because I did speak with a couple of younger people that were there. A couple of our city council members were there and did nothing to notify anyone. These are public figures. Don't they have a responsibility to the community and business owners? The event was held inside the city limits, and everyone was walking around with open containers. With all the drinking, it could have easily gotten out of hand. I did speak with a couple of teenagers who were there. People at the event bought them beer from the convenience store next door. We have a beautiful gazillion-dollar park that is gorgeous and should be places where people can have these events. But I was told they couldn't have it there because they were not allowed to drink. Now, I don't know that, I don't know any of this, this, because that's not part of what I do. That they can't drink on park premises, is what I was told. All these circumstances could have resulted in damage to my store or another shooting similar to the after-prong party several months ago, because you just don't know what people are gonna do when they get to drinking. They get mad, somebody hurt their feelings, or whatever. Had someone been hurt, who would have been responsible? I would have. And I had no knowledge of this, and I wasn't there, and I had nothing to do with it. So my questions for the council are: Is a permit required by the city for these large events? And if so, does the city have no obligation to notify the community and business owners when these large events are planned? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, next we'll have the Jasper Lake Sam Rayburn Chamber of Commerce and the Texas Film Commission to present the city with its film-friendly certification. Beverly? And Ms. Russo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am beyond thrilled, you guys, to be here today with Ms. Nancy Russo. She is from the office of the Governor of the Texas Film Commission. Jasper has finally, after years, achieved film-friendly status. That means a producer of a movie can go on their website, look up whatever they might want to look up, such as historic homes. Jasper has tons of historic homes. And they can see photographs of our beautiful city and all that it has to offer. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Benny Russo and let her tell you a little bit about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
Photo ops at all costs.
Thanks, Bob.
Good evening. My name is Betty Russo, Regional Representative for the Gulf Coast East Texas Region with the Texas Economic Development and Tourism Office, Office of the Governor. I'm here today on behalf of the Texas Film Commission to recognize the city of Jasper for achieving your film-friendly Texas certification. We want to thank Beverly Holly with the Jasper Lake Sam Rayburn Chamber of Commerce for all her hard work and coordination in this process. Thank you to Mayor Land and the city council and all city stakeholders for their support in realizing this exciting initiative for the Jasper community. You join over a hundred and seventy-five communities across the state and have positioned Jasper to provide media productions with an increased assurance that Jasper is industry-savvy and serious about welcoming their business to your community. You are prepared to accommodate on-location filming activity and match local businesses with media production-related needs and services. The Film Friendly Texas Certification helps to create jobs for the local community and bring production investment into Jasper through spending on local goods and services such as catering, construction supplies, transportation, lodging, and more. The Texas Film Commission is a division of the Office of the Governor's Department of Economic Development and Tourism. Created in nineteen seventy-one, our mission is to promote Texas as a premier media production destination. Film Friendly Texas is the statewide network of communities and exemplifies our state as a media production-friendly destination. Between two thousand seven and two thousand twenty-three, through the Living Industry Incentive Program, the Texas Film Commission attracted two point oh-two billion in local spending and created more than a hundred and eighty-three thousand production jobs across the state. This statewide economic impact would not be possible without the help of Film Friendly Texas community partners such as yourselves. With this certification, Jasper, known for being the jewel of the forest, now has created additional opportunities to showcase your historic downtown, the iconic Jasper County Courthouse, residential neighborhoods, beautiful surrounding pine landscapes, and parks such as the Martinized Junior State Park, the Historic Pine Hall, just a few of the examples of what Jasper has to offer. The Film Friendly Texas Certification demonstrates the city of Jasper. Local merchants and residents have collaborated to announce Jasper is ready for production. On behalf of the Texas Film Commission, congratulations on becoming the next Film Friendly Texas city. Have a certificate signed by the governor. Here it is. Says, "Presented to Jasper, Texas in recognition and recognition of its achievement as a certified Film Friendly Texas community, October ninth, twenty twenty-three, Greg Abbott." So I'd like to, y'all would like to stand up for, go live, but I'd like to...
Yeah, we're best. Y'all one more?
To the side a little bit, Bob.
I may have to turn my angles.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have recognition. Employee Wilmer Adams. Certificate of Recognition awarded to Wilmer Adams for outstanding work ethic and exceptional customer service for citizens of Jasper. Awarded the tenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. Mayor Anderson Land, City Council. Mr. Adams has had several, Denise, do you have those? He has, he's had several customers, citizens of Jasper, to call City Hall, send posts about his exemplary customer service. One lady has, a little four-year-old. Can't wait for him to come by on trash. He blows the horn, he makes him happy, and the lady has definitely done that. One time, he, a lady's, I guess...
Kind of a wheel.
A wheel that fell off her trash can, and Mr. Adams went by and took care of it. And she called City Hall and sent us recognition to recognize him for that. So Mr. Adams, come forward. Recognition for a city where your outstanding work ethic and exemplary, exceptional customer service for citizens of Jasper. We award you this certificate of recognition. And I'm gonna give you two season tickets for a home game, last home game. Enjoy. Just goes to show you that a lot of people do notice what things that we do here in the city of Jasper and we get recognized for it. It's always good when we do get recognized for it. And thank you, Beverly, on the bringing Ms. Russo and the Texas Film Commission to present the city with the Film Friendly Certification. That should help us, the city, promote the city. It goes a long way to promoting the city. Next thing we have is proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. City of Jasper, Texas proclamation declaring October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It says, starts out, "Whereas the city of Jasper, Texas, in recognition of important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victims services providers. Hereby urges all citizens to actively participate in the activities and programs sponsored by Family Services of Southeast Texas, Inc., the Texas Council on Family Violence and other community organizations to work toward the elimination and intimate partner violence. Whereas more than ten million women and men are physically abused by intimate partner in the United States each year. Domestic violence encompasses a pattern of behaviors used to gain or maintain power and control over a victim. And in many cases, physical violence reinforces other forms of psychological and emotional control over a victim. And in many cases, physical and other forms of psychological, emotional abuse such as threats, intimidation, isolation, severe intimate partner violence can include instances of physical assault, rape, and stalking that leave victims with injuries, post-traumatic stress disorder, and other lasting impacts. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole. Where in this community, throughout the United States and the world, the need for safe house continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need. Whereas the city of Jasper joins with others across the city, the state of Texas, and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the city of Jasper, Texas. Whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collaborative voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each of whose service adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Whereas the color purple is the color nationally recognized to represent the fight against domestic violence, and the city of Jasper recognizes the showing of the color purple ribbons at homes, schools, businesses, and public facilities as the sign of solidarity against domestic violence. Now therefore, I, Anderson Land, Mayor of the city of Jasper, do hereby declare October twenty twenty-three Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Let us stand in solidarity with domestic violence survivors and thank the countless law enforcement officers, advocates, medical professionals, and caregivers who dedicate their lives to fighting for the world without family or intimate partner violence. And together, let us carry out the mission of creating a community that is safe for all. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affixed my seal of the city of Jasper, Texas, this tenth day of October, twenty twenty-three." Okay, now we go to our agenda. Agenda items, items for discussion and our action. Consider for approval, appointment of the Karen Mary Anderson Land to the SRMPA Board of Directors. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. We need a vote. We need a vote.
I reckon I have another chair.
No, you're not. We need to have a vote.
Okay.
Okay. Need to have a vote.
We've got a conflict with the minutes and action hour. So if we address it now, we don't address the minutes, it's not...
Okay, well, we'll finish with this. Okay?
Okay.
Okay? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Who's the second?
Marcus Barbour. A motion and a second. Discussion, we have a vote. All in favor, say aye. Two ayes. All opposed, no?
No.
Could you raise your hands, please? No, I can't hear. All opposed? All in favor? Raise your hands, please. Okay, Karen, you got that? Okay, move on to the next item. Item number two, consider approval... Yep, we need to move on to the next item right now, please. Consider approval for seven minutes. Annual Budget Hearing, the regular call City Council meeting, September fifth, twenty twenty-three. We have a motion.
I've got some, I've changed these we made.
I can't hear you.
Let's make the motion, and then when you get ready to make the changes during the conference.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second. And discussion, okay?
On the bottom of the first page, there was a motion that had been made by Rashad in front of one of the SRMPA. It was second. It was voted on by every member present. And the motion says it was denied. The motion was actually voted on three, four, and two against. And so it would have passed, and that directly impacts that, we just...
Okay, well, Karen, did you make sure that we get that? So we can review that?
So that correction is gonna be three, four, and two against, and it passed at the last beat.
We'll have to look at that.
And that would place the member on the board of Sam Rayburn District, Power Board.
No, I don't think so.
Yes, sir, I do think so.
But okay, we'll look at that. Okay, we're reviewing.
We have, we suppose...
We'll have the city attorney to review that after this. Next item, item number three. Consider approval, appoint a scoring committee or bypass the committee up to approve staff recommendation charts for engineering services for the water line upgrade. Greg?
Yeah, I'm good. All praise done work for, all three of the boards done report.
Good for Sean Burke. Is everybody...
That's your recommendation.
That's your recommendation.
I'll have a motion to approve.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass unanimously. SBI Sean Burke, invoke Steve Floyd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number four, consider for approval, Resolution three thousand seven, casting the city of Jasper's one hundred and forty-eight allocated votes to nominate a council member to the Jasper Council appraisal, Jasper County, sorry, Jasper County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
I'll make a motion to nominate Rashad Lewis.
I'll second you. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, all opposed?
No.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this item?
I have one.
All right, did that.
Does it want if they announce there, does he know what's going on?
Denise, would you explain that to us, please, about how that works?
Well, my understanding is each of the entities get X number of votes divided by whatever calculation they come up with. And the city gets a hundred and forty-eight votes, but it's never been enough to put our member on the board. We can nominate one and put it on their voting board, but we haven't...
Denise, they have a problem here. If you guys explain. Thanks, Denise.
Is this better?
Thank you, Ms.
Okay, in the past, we, the Jasper County Appraisal Board gives each entity X number of votes to cast on a group of nominated individuals. The city has allocated one hundred and forty-eight votes. We never had enough votes to get one of our members on the board, but we still like to put any individual on the ballot for them to consider.
So that means that, what, explain that?
Well, it means that Rashad's name will go to the appraisal board as a nominated member.
Right.
His name will be on a ballot.
Okay.
And so when the appraisal board goes through and votes for it, then we'll cast our one hundred and forty-eight votes for Rashad. And if any of the other entities don't have a nominee, then they can allocate our votes to Rashad.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen, you got it, that passed? Okay. All right, next item, number four. Number, oh, number five. Okay, number five. Consider for approval, tabled appeal allocations, Wey Lane property, location one thirty-six West Houston, and Jacqueline Cooper, property allocation one thirty-eight West Houston. Before we go into this, I would just like to say the comments regarding the West Houston property. One, demolition took place approximately three years ago, or longer. If the contractor damaged the building to the extent that the owners are claiming, then the claim should have been filed at that time, which was three, three or more years. We have been through several storms, at least one hurricane, since the demo took place. Unsecured facades can incur wind damage. The change of wind damage to these buildings are more likely to have caused the decline and instability of the two buildings and the facade. Leaking roofs in the middle of the building were most likely not caused by the demolition. The claims that were only brought to light after we cited them were other violations which have been addressed and corrected. The city has stated and decided that yes, that we are going to make the repairs to the holes in the walls of the building, but as far as the rest of the buildings, I don't think the city should be responsible for that. And that's just my statement on that. Now, can we get a...
Mayor, I did get a chance to visit with him, and I went over a hole that was supposedly caused by the contractor.
Okay.
It's a, it's a center block. And the city said that that was in fact theirs. They would be glad to replace it or patch it. The remainder of the building, I did not go inside. I looked through the windows. It's got extensive water damage and stuff in it. I don't know where it came from. The owner I had spoken to, he was trying to get a building inspector to come look at it. And to my knowledge, the first one he talked to could be here in timely fashion. I'm trying to find the second party to come down to look at. I haven't spoken to him. I did get a text message earlier today that said they were trying to get another gentleman to look at the property. So as of right now, I would consider this closed until we get further information.
Well, just let me say this. I don't, I think we should go, we should vote on this because what you're talking about, and as far as getting an inspector, that's not gonna happen.
Let me reframe my motion. I make a motion, we fix the single damage center block, and that'll be all of this.
Okay, so we vote, so what we're gonna do is with the appeal, we voted against, but what we, the item is read, we have to vote against the appeal. And then if you decide, then we can open it up for discussion, and then you can change it that way.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right, so all in favor of approving Mr. Willie's appeal? Say aye.
Are we approving or voting against it?
If you, if you vote for it, we're voting not to approve it because it's not the city's responsibility. So we're not gonna approve Mr. Lane's motion.
I love, I'm fixing the one center block that they said was damaged. Okay, but you say we gotta vote for what the item, the item states.
Item on the agenda, right.
So you gotta vote again?
Yes, Mr. Lane's appeal. We voting, gonna vote for Mr. Lane's appeal. So all in favor of Mr. Lane's appeal, vote aye.
Aye.
All against Mr. Lane's appeal, vote no?
No. So the only thing that we have is one center block.
Did you vote yes or no? Okay, so motion does not pass. Mr. Lane's appeal is denied, three to two. Yeah, David, could you explain what you would like to, to recognize?
I just, I saw one center block that he said was damaged when they were carrying the structure down. Everything else was marginal, and there's a lot of damage in that structure that you can see through the windows. I don't, I understand why it got decided to be homicide.
Now, I understand the fire marshal and the city inspector went there and they checked that out. So Brandon, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Chair of recognition is DeMarcus Holmes, counsel.
I don't, I don't see how I really had a chance to make a motion because y'all started talking. Y'all really didn't even give a chance for a counsel to make a motion because y'all too already... I just wanna say that I totally agree with that. Disagree with that because we did it, and we should.
So what do you think? Excuse me, let me ask you, what do you think we did?
I think, I think we should approve that, that, um, his appeal.
What do you think that we did in the field we have to prove?
The building was framed before we touched it.
We didn't touch the building. We only, they only put a hole in the building. We tore down a building that was in the middle, between the two buildings. So everything that's on the inside is his responsibility.
We don't get the main building.
Okay, so no. Okay, we're moving on to the next item. Item number six. Consider approval, code enforcement variance for CJM Civil Engineering regarding eight oh-two West Gibson Street for setbacks required. That's item number six.
I've got a chance to visit with our...
Visit with the city inspector?
Yes, sir. I gave a lot of detailed information on it. I'd like to make a motion to approve that setback from that variance. I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Any discussion?
You already talked about David, you already spoke to Jeremy about it?
Okay. Thank you.
You got one, you got one. One opposition. One no.
So we have four, one, four yes, one no? Okay. Item number seven. Consider for approval, allocating two million dollars from SRMPA. Item number seven, consider for approval, allocating two million dollars from SRMPA funds to reduce electric rates for the city of Jasper. Residential, commercial customers to be spent as follows, five hundred thousand dollars for the month of September, October, November, and December of two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve allocating two million dollars from Sam Rayber Miss Air Authority funds, strict everything after that, and put those funds for street repairs, two million dollars from SRMPA. I'd like to make that part of money.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, I didn't ask for a second here. What we, the money that came from SRMPA is gonna be allocated for us. What we just got, that seven million dollars, that's gonna be allocated for utilities. Anything that we have left, if you want to put something on the agenda to have something for streets, because right now we going through a what, thirteen million dollar street repair program right now?
Right.
So I think we should, I think we should wait on that.
We didn't fund the budget for the Chiffon Seal project.
I think we should, I think we should wait on that.
I made a motion for two million dollars for SRMPA to be used for.
We're gonna make a motion.
I'll second it.
This, this not put on the agenda.
I'll call one hour.
No, not one hour because we have not. Number one, we have, the only way you can do that, David, is once this item is done, then we, then if you wanted to electric meter, but you can't, no, we cannot.
He can. If Robert Lewis order, you can amend it.
Councilor Schultz, you got, I mean, Councilor Lewis, you're out of order, okay?
I understand.
I might have lost one of them.
I'll second it.
It was seconded.
Council for approval to allocating two, you have to vote on this first.
Mr. Director, Robert Lewis order is, you can amend the item if you don't. It's the same amount of money, the two million dollars. He has the right, by Robert Lewis's order, to amend the two million dollars to whatever he wants to. If he gets a second, then by Robert Lewis's order, we have to vote on what he has.
You gotta vote on both of them.
You gotta vote on the one that you did first. Robert Lewis's order, all council members may submit an agenda item. If you want to submit an agenda item to do this, you can do that.
We've been submitting items every month.
You want to submit an agenda item on the next, next month, then you can do that. Right now, we're voting on this.
Agenda items.
If you want to present an item on this, I'll guarantee you it'll make.
Mr. Director.
We're gonna vote on this. We're gonna vote on this item right now. Excuse me, Councilor Lewis, you're out of order. Councilor Lewis, you're out of order. Okay, we're gonna vote on this item right now.
I made a motion.
Okay, so consider approval for allocating two million dollars.
Then we can vote on it.
Councilor Lewis, you're out of order, okay? Councilor Lewis, you're out of order.
Come on, man.
Okay? Ain't no come on, man. You're out of order.
I don't know.
He has a question.
Not from the audience right now. You're not being recognized, sir. Please, you're not gonna be recognized right now, okay? Now, consider approval for allocating two million dollars from SRMPA for funds to reduce the electric rate for the city of, we're gonna vote on this item first, okay? Residential and commercial customers to be spent as follows, five hundred thousand dollars for the month of September, October, November, and December. Can I get a motion on that?
Yes, I'm.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes or one aye?
Two ayes.
Two ayes. All opposed?
No. Now, now can we vote on it?
I only heard two people. Are you voting against it or for it? You're voting against the people getting two million dollars for electric?
Let me ask you a question. Can we get the city to vote?
Yes, we can. We just got seven million dollars.
I'm talking to you, sir. I'm talking to the mayor.
Okay. Councilor Sam, let's let him speak. Yes, we can, yes, we can afford this, because we just got seven million dollars from SRMPA. We can get that back to a people. Yes, we did.
Four.
Okay, we got three, three, four, and two against. Motion pass. Item eight, consider approval for annual hands for the city employees.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion approved. Can I get a second?
I second it.
Second.
Karen, a second. Second by Councilor Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know this? Item nine, consider for approval, council members to appoint a charter review commission of five citizens, which is recognized by the charter, for the city of Jasper as provided by Article eleven, General Provisions, Section eleven point twelve Charter Review Commission. I, Mayor Anderson Land, would like to submit the following five names who are citizens of the city of Jasper and have shown an interest in reviewing the city of Jasper charter. Mr. Willie King, Mr. Laquien Hillibrand, Ms. LV Raspberry, Mr. Matt Hancock, and Mr. Lou Spaddasini. This will probably be in conjunction with, as, I don't know if everybody knows or not, but Councilor Schultz has also started, was it last year?
Yeah.
Last year, they also have, whether people know it or not, we are reviewing the ordinances also. So what we want to do is in conjunction with that, we need to start a charter review committee. So I'd like to get a motion and a second on this. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was, I was wondering if we could take some of the current people on the ordinance board. They also are working on annexed, annexed areas and designation of properties that are pretty familiar with the ordinance and some of the things that are going on and possibly submit those names as a possible option to the.
Well, I think that you, your people is doing that with the ordinance committee. How many people do you have there right now?
I have more than a charter request.
I just asked, how many do you have right now working on your ordinance committee?
Current, we haven't had a meeting recently. We have twenty-two.
When's the last time you had a meeting?
We haven't had a meeting recently. We've got some conflict because of zoning.
Well, right now, we're not gonna have any conflicts with this. I recommend that we just go ahead, start this committee, and we'll do that.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, Councilor Lewis.
Would it be fair that all the council members get to nominate one person?
Well, I was.
Hold on, let me finish. Everyone on the list is someone that you handpicked. We had no idea about this committee being built, so I think it would be fair to all the council members to nominate at least one person from their district.
Okay, just let me say this. I think it would also have been fair if Councilor Schultz, when he nominated the ordinance review committee, to have done the same thing, but it was not done that way. So the way I'm looking at this right now, the way I'm looking at this right now, a precedent has been set. You had everything already set up. You picked the people to go on it. You had the table, the books at the table at the back of the room when we came in. Nobody did not know that. Nobody, nobody did that. Okay, you had a table set up at the back of the room with all the books on it.
I submitted every name to council.
No, no, you did not. I only knew that when you brought, I was on council then. I wasn't a man. And I only saw that when they came in, when you brought it in the back. So I feel like you have set a precedence for that. So either we're gonna vote on this, yes or no? So. Thank you for, thank you for your comments, Councilor Lewis.
Under discussion. Under discussion, I'd like to be recognized for a moment.
Go ahead, please.
The people that were put on that committee, all of those names were submitted. There were actually one or two additions that had come in by recommendation that we did get books for, and it was all approved by the council just the way you're, same way you're trying to do this, same exact difference. You're correct. But they were all approved by council.
So let me ask you a question. Were the majority of the people that you had, is there any stipulation as if they had to be a citizen of the city of Jasper? Because I noticed that if I can't remember, a lot of them were not.
You're correct. There were several business owners that have businesses in Jasper that were not residents of the city of Jasper, but that's not required.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we had to vote on this, which was, we have a motion and a second. Can we vote on it? Can we get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion does not pass. We will not start the charter review committee. Okay, anything else? Mr. Jerk.